...and more of a discussion with how we're dealing with some of the special exceptions. So Frank, who's a little bit under the weather, but I think we'll get through it, will give us an update with smart processing. And then there are two items that the last time we were together, or the last meeting that we had, that we, I'd say we'd give you an update by the end of this month. That's the street events, something that Dr. Willoughby had asked about in Councilman Win, that involves an update dealing with the plot. And I guess I shouldn't call them updates, but the policies we will have for moving forward for both of those. We do have a closed session item, and if time permits, we do have an update with the GIM policy. If we start to get close on time, this is one of those discussions that we could push, the GIM discussion. And that's what we have. We also have Ted Bunnes with us tonight for a tax exemption for the Larchmont United Methodist Church. And Mayor, before I turn it back over to you, just two brief announcements. I believe we contacted Council last week. After six years of working with the city, the Assistant City Manager, Ann Odell, is going to retire at the end of this month and spend more time with her family. I want to thank Ann for all that she's done. I know that discussions earlier today about public art are close to her heart, so Ann's been exceptional with working with us, and we appreciate her time.
I hope by bugging her about the plot and the closing street scene, she won't be surprised.
I thought it was chickens.
She's going home to raise chickens, that's what she's doing.
And just on one other note, tonight, we actually have, I think for a different issue, Dave Lynetti, who's the president of Norfolk Sister City, who is here tonight. And I do want to thank him as well as Ashley McLeod. I had the opportunity last week to go to Ningbo, China, to share in a signing of a friendship agreement between Norfolk and Ningbo. And it was part of the governor's delegation, as well as representatives from the port. It's an amazing city, an amazing opportunity as it relates to both educational opportunities, cultural opportunities, and maybe most importantly, economic development opportunities. So with that said, Mayor, thank you, Mr. Lynetti, and I turn it back over to you, Mayor.
You mentioned tax exemption?
Yes.
And I know you're up here. We have on the docket tonight the first Baptist church designation. We apparently have a number of people, a lot of folks, who have signed up to speak. Is there, we can short, I can short circuit, telling you that it appears to be the consensus of the council to permit this unless there are people who are still on the fence. Do you mind if I?
I'm prepared to vote for it, but I'd like to also get a point that's declaring a moratorium or whatever we have on any more of these coming forward in the next couple of years, do we have time to evaluate? I don't know whether we have to get that tonight, but I would like that to be forthcoming. You know, open up Pandora's box and have anybody on the cusp or on.
So we really can take an in-depth study?
I mean, it's a two-year stand down for accepting any more of these bad times. And I would propose that we ask for that. And I've talked to some other people.
We'll break second.
Can we do that?
Yes, it's within your discretion that this is not, that somebody has a right to be heard on.
It's only on the ones by designation, correct?
Correct.
The ones by?
Classification.
By classification. There are certain ones that are by classification that we have no control over. But then the ones by designation that come before us, those are the ones that we're looking for a moratorium on approving because we don't have to.
Well, I think during that time, we really should, and I'm not disagreeing, as long as we have a legal right to do that, I agree. But I think that we also need to come up, we don't just stop it for two years, but we really need to examine the case-by-case criteria that we would deal with in any future ones. And that would be my request. I would ask that we sit down and either do it as a council or ask the administration or the city attorney to produce for us. I understand why we're doing this one, and I think it's justified. But I think that we need to, if we're going to reexamine this and if we do others to come in the future, we need to examine what criteria fulfill on a case-by-case basis that we would have to grant this. So I don't just want to just set it aside and just two years later, we're looking at each other going, "I didn't do anything." And I really think we do need to set that. We need to take the time to figure that out. Why we did this, I understand, and I wouldn't mind being part of that, but I do think we need to lay out our rationale.
Okay. Do we really have any burning council interests right now, Mayor, when we get to the GIM?
I have two quick ones. I usually don't do them. And I know that I'm 41, Sabrina, but just, I would really like, Marcus, a Mason Creek summit with the residents here at City Hall, and I'd like for you to be part of that summit. We've done it for Willoughby, and it's been very successful with Willoughby Spit. But I think the Mason Creek residents, to be able to sit here, put the maps up, spend some time to make sure we're all on the same sheet of music would be significant. If we could do that once we finish the budget cycle, and Ron's done a great job with the families there, but I think that we need to sit here, make sure that we're all agreeing on what the city is saying needs to happen and that the families are in agreement with that, and not be on different sheets of music on that. So I would ask that we do that. I know Ron's got a lot on his plate, but we can pick a date, probably late May, early June, let's finish the budget cycle, and then sit down, prepare an agenda, and be able to communicate back and forth as to how, where we are. That'd be one. And the other one I have, Bernard, this came up at the Highway Safety Commission meeting. I would, I really would like for you to look into, and Terry, I hope you agree, and Paul, I would like an elevated fine of $250 on top of whatever it would be by statute for anyone that is caught speeding, and we can, and I mean speeding between, I'm going to say Little Creek and Hampton Boulevard, the residential section, until it approaches Old Dominion at the curve where it reduces to 30 miles an hour. It's residential on both sides of the street. I can, and I would like for you to look into it. Paul, I'd like to know if it's legally possible?
Yep.
To give an elevated fine in that section because it is residential. There are homes on both sides of the streets. It's, the only commercial that we have there, frankly, is taste is now open.
You're going to catch a lot of your friends with this one.
I don't think we will.
No, I'm just kidding.
And, you know, if we do, we do. But I really don't think we will because I can, you know, it's become, ever since I sat as a substitute, and I, no matter what it was on Hampton Boulevard, I was never cutting anybody's slack because I, people blow by there, and there's really no excuse. And I'm going to be very honest with you. What I see normally is, it's a shame, but it's a lot of young people that are either ODU students coming to and from the university, or it's Navy going to and from home, going toward Portsmouth in the Midtown Tunnel. And until they get that, until they get stopped, until it gets backed up on the other side of Old Dominion in the underpass that you have for the trains. But I want somehow for us to please look at an elevated fine during that, just in that strictly residential section, homes open up, nobody's listening, and I know PD does the best they can, but I'd like to know where we can stand on an elevate, and put it up there. Put a sign up that says, "If your car's speeding from this point on, it's a $250 minimum fine." And just make it statutory. In that way, the judge just, as he says, statutory, that's it. Not just statutory on, you know, three miles per, or $3 per mile, statutory, minimum mandatory fine, $250.
We'll tell you what your options are. We may right now be at the maximum, I'm not sure of that. But what we don't do is have a minimum.
Right.
And so, you know, we're at the range that we have now, but I'll get back to you and tell you what discretion you have.
And it's strictly residential in that area, and I'd like to know how we can get this across and set that up. And I'm sorry, that just isn't bothering me, I haven't brought it to council. But Bernard, if you can get up with me on that, I'd appreciate it. Thank you. I should have done it offline.
Just very quickly, we're getting close again to school board nominations, and I'd like to be a little ahead of the curve this time for us to, if it's okay with everybody, for Breck to put out the words. And I'd like to expand beyond just civic leagues, but also to do other civic organizations like Kiwanis or Rotary or any that you all can think of, League of Women floaters, so that we're asking for nominations for the school board so we can make sure everybody is aware of this well in advance, if that's okay with everybody.
The only, the, there's only one small issue, that we still have to, at that public hearing, mention their names, right?
Yes, that's correct.
And can we waive the requirement that somebody has to come down and nominate them?
That's correct. Their name has to be placed in nomination, so a council person or anybody else can do that.
So Paul essentially could just say?
A list.
These are the names because they've been?
Yeah, we've done that.
Okay.
We've gotten a letter from somebody who says he wants to, and we've just read it out loud.
Breck, do you already have people that have filled out applications and put school board as one of the options?
I have two.
Okay.
Angela?
Yeah, just a quick statement. I am, I've got a lot going on, and I wanted to put this together, and it kind of seemed maybe appropriate for when we were talking about budget, but in my mind, I was thinking and talking about it at Council Concerns, and it's short, but I think it's impactful, and I think it speaks to why we're advocating, and so many people are advocating for us fully funding what the school board has asked us for. And it says that education is a fundamental responsibility of the city, state, and federal government. But who pays the ultimate price when state and federal funds are cut? The city. Who has the ultimate responsibility to educate the children? The city. I love Norfolk, I really do, and I believe that everyone around this table loves the city as well, or else we wouldn't do what we do. But I have to tell you that I'm a little disappointed with the budget. I know that we have a level of service to maintain, to keep our city functioning, and to serve our residents. There are some that will say that there's not enough money in the budget for neighborhoods. Last week or two weeks ago, I voted for a hotel conference center project that cost several million dollars, and I stand by that vote because I believe it was a good project. However, I do agree with something that Councilman Smigle said in his remarks, and that is that schools are a public amenity. We have got to find a way to fund the additional $7 million that the school board and superintendent have asked for. Each of us at this table has the ability, if we had children, and I say if because y'all know I don't have any, to send them to private school if that is what we choose. But, and my parents sent me to private school, and they were very capable of sending me to private high school, but I begged them to send me to public school and let me go to Booker T. Each of us at this table, if we had children in public schools, would have the ability to choose what public school we wanted our kids to attend, whether it's in the district we live in or not, and we wouldn't have to be subject to a waiting list. Every parent in Norfolk is not so fortunate. Most parents have to send their kids to the school in the district in which they live, and they don't have a choice. So if it's a school that's accredited, that's great, but if it's not, then their kids suffer. In 1997, we added on to the City of Norfolk jail. That cost was $15.8 million, and it created 318 new beds. That same addition would cost in excess of $25 million today, and then there's the cost of $20,805 per capita inmate on an annual basis. The jail currently houses 1,434 inmates, with an average school completion of the 10th grade. According to the National Center for Education Statistics, in 2010, the median earnings for young adults with a bachelor's degree was $45,000, while the median was $21,000 for those without a high school diploma or its equivalent, and 29.9 for those with a high school diploma or its equivalent. A working adult, working 40 years without a high school diploma, in their life will earn less than $1 million. A person with a high school diploma, according to those figures, will earn $1.1 million, and someone working 40 years with a bachelor's degree will earn $1.8. In other words, young adults with a bachelor's degree earn more than twice as much as those without a high school diploma or its equivalent in 2010. There are some of us at this table who believe that an elected school board is the way to go. There are some who believe that we can do a better job at appointing the board than the public. Either way, I believe that we have an excellent school board and an excellent superintendent. Our schools have been declining for years, and turning them around is like turning around the Titanic. It takes time. However, we cannot tie the hands of the school board and the superintendent by not giving them what they need in the increments that they need in order to turn our schools around. We asked them for what they needed, they told us. Our children are smart, and they can learn, and they deserve the resources to do that. If we don't give our public schools what they need, the next conversation we will be having over the next 10 years is how do we come up with $25 million plus to build another addition to the Norfolk City Jail? Marcus, I often refer to you as the money man. I need you to find the money. That's my concern.
Very well. And it wasn't six pages, Andy.
It's within the three minutes. Good job. Did I have to double-buff me?
Good job.
That's all I have.
I just want to say two quick things. First thing is, a constituent mentioned to me today that Portsmouth Public Schools is running ads, and the city is running ads on television, advertising that all their schools are accredited, and to come live in Portsmouth. And they're showing pictures of all their brand-new schools and everything. They're using that as a marketing tool to get people to come and live in the city. Once I get a copy of that, I'll try to get you guys a link. What I wanted to ask council is, two weeks ago, Bernard's staff put together an answer to a question about the Come Home to Norfolk, the tax abatement program for renovations. Did anybody have an opportunity to read through what that, what was said? Basically, everything that we had asked, we can do. We can lower the amount, we can set a limit on the house, and the, it sunsets in June, on June 30th. And so if this is something that council wishes to proceed with, I would be interested in working with, either we could do it through committee, or if a few council members want to work together to develop a proposal to continue the program, but also hone in on marketing this to particular neighborhoods. And I thought it would be great that if each council person picked one neighborhood in their ward that they know could be, could grow from this program, and that we ask that in the budget to put marketing money in there, whether it's $20,000, for staff to go and market just in those neighborhoods, this opportunity with whatever new rules we set up with it. That way, we can see, we have benchmark, we can still keep the program citywide, but that we can target a neighborhood in each ward, go out, door knock, put hangers-on, say this program's available, and then get a measure to see if the marketing works for that. We can, you know, I'm interested in targeting some neighborhoods that have new schools. And then Coleman Place, that neighborhood around there would fit, you know, if we wanted to do 250 or less, or Crossroads Elementary, and do some areas there. But I don't know how we want to proceed with that. I can spend the time and put together a wonderful proposal, but I'd rather include everybody, or if there's interested council members that want to help and assist with that, I'd love your input and how you want to proceed with that. I think the general consensus is everybody wants to continue it, but we just want to continue it in a better way and make sure that we're getting it out there. If you read the memo, I don't know if everybody read the memo. How do you want to handle it? Do you want to do it at a committee meeting? Do you want to?
Whichever way you think is optimal.
Well, he, don't ask Marcus, because Marcus wants us to. Remember? That's what you said. You said, "Notice that staff didn't come with a recommendation," right?
Do we have a time? I mean, is this thing actually, is our?
We did put a sunset on it, yes.
For this June?
Yes, and, you know, if you, if you didn't want to try to have it all finished quickly, you could just lift the sunset and then take what time you wanted to change it.
Well, I would certainly go with that and then spend time in the summer.
Yeah, and then spend some time.
Yeah.
Yeah, I mean, why don't we lift the sunset?
Because if we did it by committee, then it's got to wait and come to a full council, and it's going to take some time.
It'll take a couple of months, probably. We've got the budget.
Are you anticipating drastic changes to what you're placing there?
No, it's more about the marketing aspect, and you're allowed to target neighborhoods with it. That's something separate.
You're already allowed to do that.
Right, but there was concern brought up about that basically anybody who has a $500,000 house could apply for it, but that the law allows us to lower, we can basically say, a house 250 or less. Somebody said they thought 14 years was too long. Somebody brought up about that we give them three years to do it, maybe we need to shorten that time. So I think those are some specific things we need to look at.
Definitely speaks for effect. We should just get rid of the sunset.
Yeah, I mean, I think we actually modeled it after one that was in Richmond.
Right.
It actually worked pretty well, but it does have revenue implications for us, too. But why, you know, why don't we lift the sunset, and then we'll, you know, we'll have a special meeting one day and just talk about it?
Okay.
Excellent. Okay.
Mayor, members of council, this presentation is about a real estate tax exemption application received from the Larchmont United Methodist Church. This application is not for the church itself or for the pastor's residence. The application is for an associate pastor's residence. Just to refresh your memory, not that we are not all intimately aware, but the categories or the types of properties by classification, just by their nature, and the General Assembly has provided council with the ability to award or affect real estate tax exemptions by designation. As we've done in recent years, this one pager shows a summary of the application. The subject property is on Jamestown Crescent on the northern Larchmont area. The church itself is a 501(c)(3). This residence has assessed value as of July 1, 2013, of just above $245,000 at our current tax rate. Negative impact to the city would be $2,721. And these last questions are the categories that the General Assembly suggests that council consider when evaluating an application such as this. And these responses are for the church itself.
What does reasonable employee compensation mean?
It's an evaluation as to, or an assessment as to whether or not employees are receiving reasonable compensation.
The test is that they're not non-profitable by shifting up the revenues to the executives.
Okay.
That's what the test is for, that they're truly non-profitable.
Okay.
Is there a public benefit? Yes, significant donations, neither of those would be surprising for a church. Again, the property used is a parsonage for an associate pastor, not the pastor. So the church does have, by classification, pastors' residence as tax exempt. Reasonable employee compensation, yes. Individual employee benefit, no. Substantial political activities, no, and there is no alcoholic beverage license issued to the church or for this property. This information is for your consideration. Should you desire, the next step would be the scheduling of a public hearing, consent agenda, followed by the public hearing and council's consideration of the rules. Do you want to have any questions?
Are there any other instances in the city where we have an associate?
Sorry, what was the question?
Are there any other?
There's just in the city where this is a new frontier.
Has the church been paying the taxes for this parsonage?
Yes.
The church has been paying.
It's owned by the church.
Okay.
The house is owned by the church?
Yes, the house is owned by the church. I believe it's all in the application, which is public information. The associate pastor that lives there has lived there for several years, but they've recently received their certification.
Uh-huh.
Hence, the church's request for the tax exemption request.
He's a full-time employee.
Yes.
Is, was, did the church always own it, or did the associate pastor ever own it and transfer ownership over to the church? The church purchased it, not the associate pastor. Okay. She rented it from the church. Is she renting it now? So she was obtained? No. It's part of her compensation package now. Okay.
Mayor, Mr. Jones indicated to you earlier that one of the issues we wanted to talk to you about today is the next step in smart processing. A couple of months ago, David talked to you about the technology changes. I also, I believe he also talked to you about some of the administrative issues, and we wanted to talk to you today about some of the regulatory issues. Just as a reminder of what smart processing is, is looking at how we can better improve our customer service, get answers more quickly to people, and enable things to happen more quickly through the city. We're looking at it in a whole array of areas, and the one we're going to be focused on tonight is land use and permitting processing. The real issue that we're trying to deal with is how do we streamline our processes? How do we get approvals faster for people? Because that is, when we heard all of the comments from the regulated community, one of their concern was it takes some time in Norfolk to get things through the entire process. So what we are looking to do is to provide, as David indicated to you, provide those administrative procedures that are quicker. And some of the things that we want to suggest to you tonight will be purely administrative changes, policy changes that council can do with a knot of their head, so that we can become more efficient, customer-focused, and business-friendly. And the other is to introduce to you today some of the ordinance changes that you're going to be seeing over the next few months. So the first thing we wanted to talk to you about is a policy issue, which does not require an ordinance change on your part. David mentioned this to you in his presentation, and that is that we eliminate some of the requirements for a brand-new ordinance for some ABC establishments. So what we're looking at, and a lot of this, is for eating and drinking establishments. These are places like the restaurants downtown, restaurants throughout the city, not just downtown. Right now, the ordinance says that this may require a new special exception for a change of manager. We're proposing to drop that and focus on a change of ownership would require a new special exception, if you would concur. We wouldn't do that for entertainment establishments, because that's typically where we run into the problems with the entertainment task force. Likewise, a change of floor plan in eating and drinking establishments. Technically, every time a restaurant gets an ATOP into their establishment where they have to pull two tables together, they're in violation of their special exception. So we are proposing, instead of regulate the floor plan for every eating and drinking establishment, let's focus on the capacity, which would deal with fire code and health code issues, and be worried about that as opposed to the individual floor plan. And then for entertainment?
Frank, why is the floor plan even, I mean, I've seen it before and never understood why that's even an issue. It seems like a micromanage.
I agree. It is something that we have been doing for more than 10 years.
Because we've probably been with it.
Because that's the direction that was given. We have some eating and drinking establishments that have given us more than 40 floor plans, trying to accommodate every potential issue. The challenge is, each of those floor plans has to be drawn by an architect, so you've increased the cost. And then, yes, ma'am. And if they don't draw a floor plan that would accommodate, oh, I've got the ATOP, I need to rearrange tables, they're not going to send that business out the door. They're going to violate their special exception. And that is a concern to the eating and drinking establishments in the city, because they're putting their special exception at risk in order to accommodate this business. So our suggestion is, let's focus on capacity, so that we still have the ability to say it's going to meet health code, it's going to meet fire code, but we're not worried with that micromanagement of detail. And then for entertainment, instead of trying to get every specific type of entertainment listed, can we establish categories? For example, do you really care if an establishment has three musicians or four? Are you more concerned with, are they going to have, we suggested one to three, it could be one to four, maybe five or more in a band becomes an issue? Disc jockey is always going to be an issue. Cultural dance is always going to be an issue. Can we come up with broader categories instead of, okay, you're going to have an open microphone, you're going to have karaoke, you're going to have a comedian, you're going to have fashion shows, you're going to have game night? We have some ridiculously long lists that we think we could consolidate into categories and then regulate based on those categories. So these are all things that don't require an ordinance change. These are things that can be done with a knot of the head that we think would expedite the process. I'll tell you that we have one establishment, Smart Mouth Brewery, that has been open for less than a year, and they're already in for their fifth special exception because of these requirements. The Green Onion and Gant has been in twice for nothing more than a change of manager. And so we can make a more business-friendly approach to these eating and drinking establishments. And so we can make a more business-friendly approach to these eating and drinking establishments by doing the same as the policy issue. And then in terms of some ordinance changes that we need to do, we've got problems. We need to clean it up. We've discovered this as we began working on some of the regulations for the arts district, and they permeate the entire ordinance. We have inconsistencies in the ordinance that we need to clean up. And for example, I'll give you some examples on each of these in a moment. We also need to clarify our language, so that the ordinance should be written so John Q. Public can understand. So you're not having to go to Bernard, or to me, or to Adam Alita to say, what does this mean? A typical citizen ought to be able to understand what we're saying when we have an ordinance, so that it is not written in legalese or bureaucraties, but it's simple. And we need to improve our processes. And one of the things you need to understand is a lot of this is already underway, which is why it's important we get this in front of you.
Frank, with those ordinance changes, each one of them has to go before the planning commission?
Yes.
So how long are you looking at? You're working with his office?
We are working with the city attorney's office. Mr. Malita and I met this morning and talked through some of these issues. We are meeting, Bernard, I don't even know how much time of atoms we're taking trying to work through this, but we are meeting on a regular basis trying to work through these issues. This is not going to be simple, it is not going to be quick, but there are some of the things we're trying to bring forward now, and then we've got a whole list of other things. But just to give you some of the issues that we've got, that we discovered, we have problems with the uses that we allow throughout the city. For example, we discovered as we were working on the arts district, that art galleries are prohibited downtown, meaning the art center in a city building is illegal. We also don't allow the cruise ship terminal downtown.
Well, the art center was there, it was at the old facility.
I understand, but the issue, the issue is it is not a permitted use, so we just need to clean these up. And the problem is that these are listed as specific uses in some zoning districts, but not in others.
It was one of the Selden Arcade, I mean, not just the Selden, but in the Moda Sello Arcade as well.
It's just not a permitted use right now. We're trying to clean that up. You're going to see this as an ordinance revision probably in June, trying to clean this up. This is purely a cleanup at this point, trying to address these inconsistencies where we have uses that are the right use in the right place. It's just the ordinance says they shouldn't be there. We need to eliminate inconsistencies in the ordinance. And this is, this is a little concept that's a little hard to understand at times, so I've just chosen one example, and that is that if you look at chapter six of the zoning ordinance, it limits where you can do off-lot parking. But then you look at chapter fifteen of the zoning ordinance, and it says you can do it everywhere. We need to clean that up, because it's not fair to the public to have one part of the ordinance say one thing and something else say something different. So we're trying to work through cleaning all of this up. We need to clarify our language. You saw some of this in the East Beach Harbor ordinance that you just saw, where we've got a lot of terms that are in our ordinance that don't make sense to people. A yard zone, a building zone, a facade zone, fenestration. The average citizen doesn't understand what those terms are. We need to simplify it and getting into, get the ordinance in the language that John Q. Public can understand, so they know what we're looking at. And we need to improve some of our processes. We have some areas where we require a special exception, but the ordinance already says if you want to do this use, you have to meet all these requirements. And so the question is, if they meet all those requirements, do they really need to go through and have a special exception as well? So that would be one of the other areas, and the example I would use with this is a commercial drive-through. Dr. Whibley asked me about four years ago, can't we adopt some standards where we're not having to look at these every time? So yes, we adopted those standards, but we didn't try to take it out until we saw if they're working. They appear to be working, because they have been, every drive-through has been approved so long as it meets those standards since we did it. So the issue is can we eliminate some of those special exceptions? So the fundamentals of what we're going to be doing over the next year, possibly longer, is again, eliminating inconsistencies, clarifying language, making it easily understandable, eliminating duplicative processes that we don't think add the value, and establish the level of approval for a use at the appropriate level. An example of that I'll give you is our development certificates in the pedestrian commercial overlays as well as downtown. Right now, if you want to comply with the standards, you have to ask for permission. If you don't want to comply with the standards, you have to ask for permission. We think that you ought to ask for permission from city council if you don't want to comply. But if you're going to comply, we ought to make it easier for people, because we've told them, this is what we want you to do. And if they're doing it, we ought to make it easy for them to do that, encourage people to do it, rather than come in right now. It's just as easy to ask for waivers, and it's a lot less expensive, but that means we're not getting what we're asking for. We can make that go away by dealing with establishing a level of approval at the appropriate level. And to just give you an idea of where we are with this, you adopted the East Beach Harbor revisions in March. Downtown goes to, the downtown revisions go to the planning commission this Thursday, this week. So you'll be seeing that probably in June. We're looking at trying to eliminate some issues for zoning certificates. The zoning certificate is required to do a fence, for example. And our issue is our ordinance ought to be clear enough where people know what is required for a fence, instead of having to come and ask, what do you need to do to put up a fence? Which is the way it's written right now. We are, and we're hoping to get that in May. We are updating our floodplain regulations. This is consistent with what we talked to you about a couple of months ago. You asked, is this a smart processing issue? And my answer is yes, because if we can save people from exposing their property to risk, we're doing a smart thing. So it fits into the smart processing concept. We have scheduled a whole series of public meetings with the development community beginning in May, so that will probably get to the planning commission in June or July. We are in the process of completely reviewing all of our use table regulations. We've had fourteen meetings on this right now. We've just had our last one before I came up here. We have one more scheduled. We're anticipating we'll be able to bring all of those to you in June. The historic districts revisions, PAXI has completed their work. They have had public meetings on it, and we're anticipating that would be presented to you in June. And then about three years ago, Mr. Burford said, can't we revise our parking regulations to better reflect that we're an urban place? We're right now in the process of revising, reviewing the fourth edition of ITE to make sure we are on track with the most current technical requirements. And then we have a whole series of, and so that's what you'll be seeing basically over the next four to five months. Other areas that we're already working on, or we're ready to begin working on revisions to our sign ordinance, another issue that we've been working with the attorneys on. The whole issue of development certificates that I mentioned to you, this is going to take a little more time because of trying to make sure that we have the right language everywhere for this. Special exceptions, some of the ones that we're suggesting, we can, we might be able to simplify our special exception for mixed use. If we want to encourage mixed use, we should make it easy for people to do it, so long as they can meet the requirements. If we don't want to encourage it, that's fine, but we say everywhere we want to encourage it. Likewise, commercial drive-throughs and off-lot parking, and then the open space revisions that you asked us to work on about two years ago, we propose to bring those to you, so that we could eliminate all of the waivers that you're asked for, for open space by having more realistic standards than we currently have. These are likely to be what you'll see the next six to twelve months down the road that we try to move forward. Our goal overall is to continue to improve customer service, to make us the business-friendly city that we desire to be, and at the same time, being safe and fair to our neighborhoods, so that they know what to expect. We have internal work groups that are currently reviewing everything. Everything we're doing is going out to stakeholders, so that stakeholders have an opportunity to comment on it before we go to planning commission. And the key to everything is regular, ongoing communication. So we are engaged in that. The next steps, the more immediate things that we would like your okay to, unless we hear otherwise, we begin implementing some of the special exception provisions that I described to you immediately. If you disagree, we won't do that, if you'd like more time to think about it. We're going to continue those ordinance revisions that I talked about that are already underway. But we did want to give you a heads up, this is happening, this is moving forward, and we begin working on those longer-term ordinance revisions as we continue to move forward. Because it is all about how we can improve our city working together.
Any questions?
Frank, you've probably answered this before, but maybe things have changed. You once said, I complained about like CBS and the design that we have, and that really only historical districts can regulate. Are there things that we can do, even though the property's grandfathered, that they would still have to meet some kind of standards in the city? I'll give you an example, and I'm not picking on Dollar General, but they're building a new store on Little Creek Road. It was a lot that was, a building that was condemned, it got torn down, it sat open for about two years. And Dollar General, within a month, has put up a structure that it looks like a used car building. It's just, it will blow over probably in a storm. I don't know how else to put it. And just if we're trying to increase, you know, East Beach is around the corner there that has design standards, I'm just wondering, you know, is there anything that we could have done to tell Dollar General, it's great that you're coming into our city, however, we don't want you to look like a used car lot when you put it up? Can we regulate even planting trees or something around it, even though it's a grandfathered property?
We can regulate landscape, and we do. We, whenever we have a change of use, we do try to improve the landscape. We don't always try to bring them into full compliance, but we try to bring them further into compliance. The deals on Tidewater, for example, we didn't require them to come into full compliance with landscaping, but we said you have to provide this additional landscaping. So landscaping, we can do. We can also require them, and we do require them to come into compliance with parking, but we do grandfather them with the existing building for the parking they've had. Otherwise, we have buildings throughout the city that would have no possible use. So we try to look at addressing that issue to the extent we can. We're always also looking at eliminating curb cuts. What we cannot do is regulate the design, except in historic districts. We can regulate the form, so we can regulate how much transparency there is. Can you see into the building? We can regulate the building placement, meaning we can regulate it relative to the street, we can regulate it relative to the side. We can regulate the amount of building footage that you, square footage that you put on the site. We can regulate the amount of open space. So we have, we can regulate form, but form is different from design. I can't regulate the design, I can't regulate silver.
The two sometimes mix, and so this is a big piece of work, and so height is one of the things, sure, Frank did not mention, and the building code applies to all properties, and that we only have design review in historic districts. That's because that's the only category that we've elected to have under the statute. We've discussed this, Tommy, long ago in the past, and you can have other character districts. And so if you have an area of ranch homes, that's a character. And like an historic district, you can set up the same procedures, but usually when we've asked neighborhoods in the past, would you like your neighborhood to be subject to the sort of design review that applies to historic districts? I think that residents have been wary of having additional regulation, and so that it's not just limited to the historic districts, but that's all we have in our arsenal right now, so that-
Bernard is correct. The one other place that we have really begun to regulate more of those issues is in our non-standard lots-
Yeah.
-where we've said you have no right to develop, because this lot doesn't meet minimum requirements, but we're going to give you the ability, so long as you build something that is concurrent with the predominant prevailing styles that we see in the area.
Yeah, I agree with, I just, I guess my issue is that, and I don't want to be anti-business, I think it's great that they want to build a store here. I just think that it bothers me that we kind of just sell our soul to them, and they can put whatever they want up, but I almost feel like we could take a friendlier approach, and maybe when they come in for the application, maybe we can give them some samples, like Cookout Restaurant, that wasn't their original design, and they worked with some of our wonderful, bright, young people in the city to develop a classy-looking fast food restaurant. I think it looks classy compared to what you see in other places. And maybe present them a pattern book, in a sense, of what we would like for them to follow, and maybe an Ocean View, you know, it's more of a beach-type theme or look, and you have pastel colors or something instead of, but I'm just wondering if there's, I don't know, I just think that sometimes we just let them throw up stuff, and we end up with a hodgepodge look, particularly on Military Highway and Little Creek Road, that isn't appealing to our city. And you drive into Virginia Beach, and even, you know, I know Williamsburg has their historical, but you just, sometimes you get a different feel when you go into those cities, and you see that there's some kind of connection with their businesses and how it fits in the community. And we only have parts of our city that do that. I don't know.
Because those would be hoopla back at Chick-fil-A. I mean, how did that all, was it because they bought city property?
Yes, that's the other issue. The city attorneys have worked through a process that any time you sell property, there's a condition of their contract. They are agreeing to go through a design process with the city. So that's how we were able to look at the Chick-fil-A, that's how we look at a lot of-
Whatever we can do to help as you're looking through this, I think that there's people that would appreciate us trying to find, even if it's a friendlier way of just presenting to them, hey, we like your design, but let me, let's show you what else has been, it might only cost us a little bit more to tweak it, just make it look prettier. I don't know. Does anybody else share that?
Oh, absolutely. Yeah.
You've got to build it right the first time, and if you allow for standards, it'll be used.
All right, Frank.
This is great work, Frank.
Just to follow up-
We're just beginning.
I know, but it is great work.
I'll just let you know, this is probably going to take several years before we need to be-
I just don't think this one needed to go through approval, because the lot was grandfathered in its commercial-
To give you an example, I know Martin really, Martin was planning really gave Harry's a very difficult time.
Yeah.
About theirs. And now we're going to continue to meet with him, and he really pushed that, so.
They were asking for change in Martin's changes for windows, things like that. So it does occur, I just think it's-
But you need somebody like that too, Andy, that's going to take the time and have the interest to do it, and if you don't have it, you don't-
Exactly.
But Martin took the time.
Yeah, Martin took the time.
We didn't get exactly what we wanted, but we got a lot better.
It was towards corner, that's why.
And is it required, and a requirement for every property too, is another issue. If it's not required and it's grandfathered or it's already zoned, then they can pretty much, they don't have to come to us and ask.
But we could have that, but they have, they still have to apply for other permits, and I think we're missing out on the opportunity, when they're here applying for that, to have that conversation, you know, with them and say, before you move forward with this, is there some plans that we can show you that may fit better and be more welcoming to the community? You'll get more business. We can't force it, but we can, you know, suggest it, and that's a start.
But I think in this scenario, Terry said, it's got to have somebody who cares.
Yeah.
And that usually is somewhere on planning, if it's his neighborhood, they've got to care. And I'm not faulting anyone on planning, but that's really what it's come down to, is that if you have somebody who cares, is on planning, that will push those agendas, then, I mean, and frankly, you've got Matt over there, and I think it's something you need to talk to Matt about. I'm not saying, but just sit down with Matt and say, hey, listen, this is what the expectation is, and have him push those, that agenda item for you with each of those people that are developing. I'm sorry.
No, this is fine. Street events, we're having street events tonight. I'm a little bit on the downside of weather too, so I'm getting French drugged with this. We have decided that we really would like to have a different kind of downtown, one that's active, we have people in the streets, people coming, and so we look towards how we could do that and open up the downtown and have things happen there. And we decided that we really needed to have some, a clear process for people to follow, and establish some guidelines and requirements, so everybody would know what they could do and how they could get permission to do that. So we went through and developed some guidelines, which you'll be seeing this afternoon. The guidelines have been reviewed, draft guidelines, were reviewed by the downtown Norfolk Council, downtown Norfolk Civic League, and the Freemasons, Freemasons Street Association. And we incorporated their comments into the items that you'll be seeing tonight. There was some disagreement between the groups, but most of them agreed on the same kinds of things, and that's what's in the guidelines. We have a standard special events process, and you may be familiar with this or not. It has many steps, but this really has worked very well for us. It's a panel of people that goes across departments. It's a panel of people that goes across departments, including the Police Department, Public Works Department, and looks at the applications that are coming in. So these are the kinds of things that the panel, staff panel, takes a look at, and you'll see some more in the, in the next couple slides. But they look at crowd control, traffic, what the parking plan is, what, how security needs to be handled, making sure they're, whatever's happening is applying, is complying with our ordinances. Of course, we look at fire rescue, what happens to trash, where the restrooms are. Basically, you're creating a very small venue in a street for people to come and have an event, and that's done through our special event process. The guidelines, and I'm going to go through the pieces of it now. Notification, because the streets are the arteries of the city, we need to notify those who would be using those streets, so they know that the special event's happening and we're closing those streets. So you'd, of course, tell the three groups who have already reviewed the guidelines within 30 days of our approval, so they get a heads up. And then again, directly notified, and that's usually done by hangers or some sort of direct notification, is required two to four weeks before the event, because sometimes people forget that it's coming. So that will give them a, a second idea of what's happening. The guidelines, the event curfew, 10:00 p.m. on Sunday through Thursday, Friday and Saturday 11:00 p.m. There was some discussion at those three groups about what these times should be, and this is what we finally, was finally settled upon. They wanted to have them a little bit later, and maybe when we, when we review how this went over the, after the first year, the first season, we could look at later. But this seemed to be a good all-around starting part time, because there are people who are living downtown.
Anne, can you back up?
Yes.
You say, "Give them notice."
Yes.
Is there a, appreciate the fact you want to give them notice, but does that imply something more? I mean, are they supposed to then comment on it, or...
No, it's just, this is, it's a warning, a, this is what, an announcement, what is coming.
It's like when we have a race in Larchmont, we have a little go, so we can plan to close the streets.
Yeah, I'm all for that. I didn't know what you were saying. Okay. We were going to tell you within 30 days, so now you tell us what you think or something. But if that's...
It's not a conversation that we're creating. It's a, within 30 days of city's approval, so you're saying that this is what's going to be happening in your, in your street between this block and that block, so that they know what's happening. And then sometimes, and I know I had a race through my neighborhood, and I got my, this notice, so you can know what to do on that Saturday morning, if you get out earlier or get out late after the event's over. The applicant can be any business or organized group, and they will, are, would be required to submit a letter, at least one, of support from a business or tenant of the street that's going to be closed. And this is just to make some accountability and some knowledge on the street of what's happening. It's an accountability from the applicant.
But if it's a race, you're not going to make them go to every street and get...
A race is a different, we have different guidelines for races. This is just street events.
Thanks. So the applicant can be, you know...
It could be a, it could be a bar. It could be Virginia Stage Company. It could be a CHKD. It could be, which was, is an organized group.
Could it be for money, because they charge initially?
We're going to get to that. No, we're not going to have ticketed events. We discuss ticketed events with the other groups, and we recommend, it's a business street, and so there are businesses along the streets. You need to maintain access to those businesses so that they can get their business done. So we're maintaining it non-ticketed, non-private events. Because the streets are the arteries of downtown, we need to look very carefully about traffic, because we've got a lot of people working here, and they need to get into and out of their work. We have a lot of people coming to do business in downtown. And so we actually did a map of where streets could not be closed, and those are the ones with the dark lines on them. Those are access points that are needed to either be, get through the city, deal with light rail, or get access to the parking garages. And the parking garages are very important to maintain our business. The major streets, as you can tell from this, that could be closed are Gramby, which is right here, Bush, which is here, of course, Waterside, and then there's pieces of the other east-west streets that could be closed. So that, that gives you some idea. And those streets have some alternate routes to them, so we can keep our downtown moving, but it needs to have people going to and from work or businesses. We have proposed that the, in order to keep the traffic going, we would have no more than two downtown street closures approved per day. We have had two per day before, but it's pretty rare. We would like to have all the traffic flowing around any one event, so we would look at the side streets, the parallel streets to whatever's being closed. And we would limit the duration of the street closure, and some events need to load in, put up tents, put out chairs, do whatever. So we'd also look at the load-in and load-out schedule and try to make that work around the, the normal business that's being done in downtown. Alcoholic beverages, we had a lot of discussion about that at the, at the three review groups. Right now, we, our ordinance, our city ordinance, does not allow for open alcohol, alcoholic beverage containers, and all of the organizations said that these were, that alcohol for events was essential, very important. They used different words, but they all supported it. So in order to allow alcohol in the closed-street events, we would need to do an amendment to the City Code 2917. And, but the groups also discussed, what are the boundaries around having alcohol in the streets? And the boundaries are city administrative approval, that which would be the issuance of our special event, and adherence to the ABC requirements. So those are the boundaries around who could have alcohol where and how. That does require an ordinance change. Vendors, as you know, you're looking at vendors and how vendors operate in the city right now. So we kept it right now. Vendors would not be allowed in the streets, but we're, you're looking at the vendor changes, and so that would be coming through to you as you do your, your vendor review. Events would be free and open to the public, as I explained earlier. We wouldn't have ticketed events, and we wouldn't have private. The organizer of the event, the applicant, would need to provide for us a drawing that would show how they plan to address these various things. Now, they may just be closing a block, and so it may be a very simple drawing, or they may be closing an entire street, which makes it a much more complex drawing, and much more complexity in what they need to provide. So it'll depend on the event, sort of how detailed that is. But these are the kinds of things that the panel looks at to make sure that the event is going to work well for the participants and for the people who are, have, have businesses. We have, we had a little bit of a discussion about, what is the, is there a saturation point? Is there a point at which there are too many events downtown? And I will say that the other groups that reviewed the guidelines basically wanted to leave the saturation point. They didn't want to have any balance around saturation points. We've talked about it, and when we talk about street events, it's, it includes the runs and walks, which you mentioned earlier, parades, bike races, anything that closes streets. And historically, we have an average of two or fewer of these per month. So we talked about staff capacity, what is oversaturation, how do we make sure traffic continues to flow, and thought that downtown street events would be limited to two per week. Two per week. We want to make, we would take a look at this. We're going into our season for street events. When everybody's out, we'd take a look at this in December and see how it worked over this past year and see if that's the proper limitation. The next steps would be finalizing the guidelines, sending the copies of it out to our three review groups, and then we'd be starting to accept application for street closures. And at your direction, which we should get from this discussion, I hope, proceed with the amendment of the City Code concerning alcohol.
Do it. Anne, did you mention, as far as the alcohol goes, I take it, will police be required at the event?
Yes. ABC, would the ABC requirements have, it has to be fenced in some way. It can be the orange fencing.
And the organizer will be required to pay for this, for their place?
Yes, yes. So you would have police, and it would be fenced, and they would have a certain number of exits and entrances, and the business, if it's in front of a business that also sells alcohol, then that business has to sign off on it, because there's been some concern about, "You're selling it in the street. I sell it in my establishment," so they would have to sign off. So there are ABC requirements that would have to go.
How quickly could we do that, we have the ordinance?
I have a draft, I have that ordinance, so we could bring it back at your next, your next meeting, if that's what you like. Your next voting.
So that would be the, May the 14th?
May 14th.
Because obviously, this is weather dependent, and so I think it would be well for us to, if we're going to do it, can you do it?
Do you have to advertise it?
No.
Okay. It's a regular gender.
Right.
Okay.
Thank you, Anne.
Yeah, is it, the alcohol, is it just beer and wine, or mixed beverages as well? Do we make that distinction?
We haven't made that distinction. I mean, what's been requested is beer and wine.
Okay.
Apparently beer, actually.
Right, yeah. That's no, okay. I don't, I, I shan't alcohol.
It's like beer gardens. People would like to have beer gardens, and they'd like to have, maybe wine tastings.
Sure.
But I guess to Anne's last slide, the policy's already in place. So what you would be voting on is the ABC component, but right now, the, the street policy is done. So we implement that immediately.
Get it done.
Did you look at other cities? I mean, does this track whatever some other folks are doing, Anne, or is this just you?
We did look at some other cities, yes. Yeah, it does, it does track what they're doing. I mean, some are a little more, they have maybe more events per week than we allow, and that sort of thing, but it tracks. And I think, because we haven't had it, a good thing is to do an experiment, which we could do this in season, and then we could tweak it if we need to do that. Okay, the plot. On this one, we've worked very closely with the Downtown Norfolk Council, looking at the plot and how to have events at the block. And we have two sets of guidelines. There's daily use of guidelines and special event guidelines. You can keep that in your mind, because they are different. We would like to have this available for this event season that's coming up. You know, we're in the spring, and people are ready to have events going through the summer and into the fall. It's a nice place, and there's lots of people walking through it and sitting at the tables and chairs at it. Daily use, so that's just today, tomorrow, yesterday. The plot's available for daily use anytime right now, up to 50 people. So if you wanted to go out, remember busking, we had our busking ordinance where you can fly. You want to go out and bask in that park and gather a small crowd, you can do that now. If you want to have a little theater performance on the containers, you can do that now. You can, and people are using all the tables and chairs and all that out there when you drive by. That's all available now. No need to do anything different. However, if you're over 50 people, it's a relatively small space, particularly if you take into account all the vegetation that's there, which is pretty dense. So if you have over 50 people, if you want to install equipment, tables, something or other, you want access to water and power, you would need to get a special event permit. And we kind of just talked about that. Vendors, as I said before, we need to change the ordinance, and that's coming through another, another way. And the stage would be part of your, reserving stage would be part of your permit. So this is for special, special events that meet those requirements. Again, here's the process and the kinds of things that the special events panel thinks about and looks at. This at the bottom was actually brought up by the reviewing groups, that the Norfolk Council would serve on the panel, so they know fully what's going on. Applications, there's a window in which they can apply, minimum of 30 days, maximum of 180 days. They would have insurance, and these curfew times match the street events times. ABC, again, we need to have the ordinance changed, and we'll bring that back, so that we can, and we'll just comply with that. Same with the vendor, and this would be free and open to the public, no private or to human events. For daily use, this is what DNC would be doing. They are maintaining and repairing it, trash removal, liability insurance, and water and power. Water and power are locked right now, so in order to get access to them, somebody has to unlock them.
Where would water come out?
Comes from the cell.
From where?
The cell, which is right next to the plot.
Okay, okay.
And it's used, it's been used primarily today, just to water the plants, the vegetation For special events, this is when you get a permit. The responsibilities change. DNC, of course, is involved in reviewing the applications. They would put up some notification signs of special events going to be occurring on that site, where some people could come. They would help us staff the events if we need to help them, and they would unlock and lock the water and power. Our responsibility is to go through the special events process, coordinate all of our city staff that needs to support it, maintain this calendar, so we don't have special events permits overlapping, and we would work with DNC on getting access to water and power. So our next steps would be to amend our right of entry. DNC presently has a right of entry to the plot. We'd amend that to include these two sets of guidelines, the daily use and the special event. And then we would start taking applications for the special events for this season, which is generally ends in November. And as you know, the conference center's coming, and so in all of our documents, we have that there's a 30-day notice to DNC to remove the pieces, so that we can start, when we need to start for the conference center, we can do that, if they're in 30 days.
Marcus, could a special event be a political rally? I mean, once you do this, the content goes, I mean, you have no ability to...
Right. You've got the First Amendment prohibiting you from having content discrimination.
So once you do this, anything is, I mean, you know, you know, people against the American Way or something like that, all of that, everything applies.
First Amendment rights, as Burner points out, we, we do allow groups to congregate...
Sure. I mean, they have an absolute First Amendment right to do that. Do you make, the only thing I would, I mean, this is fine with me, but I, Marcus, the thing that will frustrate people is if they go to make an application and it doesn't get turned around quickly enough. You just have to make sure. If we want a 30-day notification, I don't know what to, I mean, how you tend to handle the staffing for taking the applications, but, you know, people will need to know in a fairly short period of time, or at least what, you need to be able to turn it around so they don't get, little blunt enthusiasm that we're trying to create.
When is the 30 days?
It's the afternoon.
Anne, I'm going to go back just one second to your, to your first presentation. You said that they need to have a letter from, from somebody who wants it on the street.
Somebody in the area that's going to be closed.
But let's say that you get, somebody gets wind of this, and they say, "I don't, my business is on that street. I don't want you to close my street." Then how do we weigh that business saying, "I don't want this"? And I'm sure you all discussed this. How do we weigh that business saying, you know, "If you're going to close my street Friday till 11:00 p.m., I rely on, on motor vehicle traffic." And I'm just curious, if, what was the discussion about that? Because I'd hate to see great ideas be put to the wayside, and we can't do this because one person comes and objects, and they may just be somebody who does not have a valid reason, and just wants to just stop every... who does not have a valid reason. They just wants to just stop everything. And I hope that, first of all, tell me what your discussions revolving around that issue were. And then I would tell you what my hopes.
We did have some discussions around that, because we had some discussions around whether the area that's going to be closed, all the businesses had to say yes. And really decided that, no, that's, that's, it's a broader issue of the city to close and have a special event there. So that's why the panel reviews it. And so the panel reviews it, which is a broader cross-section. And when they do their review, they look at all those things. Traffic, trash, all that, parking, parking, security. They look at all those things to make sure that the event actually is, will occur in a positive manner. So that's sort of our safeguard. One person can't say, can't shut it down, is what you're saying.
Exactly. And I'm just saying, because you could have one person veto every time. And then all the great work that you put into this and the panels put into it, and also what citizens want to put into it is veto, because some guy comes in and says, I don't want it to happen. And then you freeze it, and then you never have this type of event.
Right. We don't have a, we, no one person has that authority.
I understand that we'll learn things as it goes along, too. We can always amend, not necessarily ordinances, but I think that we'll learn things as we go along. People may be contacting us and saying, we like it, we don't like it, or it affects my business. And we can deal with that and, again, on a case-by-case basis.
And these are guidelines. So it doesn't have to go through a long process. We can, we can change it if we find some reason that we're willing to change it.
Good. I just don't want the one person to veto.
On the minimum days, do you, I mean, if these are what everybody wants to stick to, it's fine. But like, do you think maybe it should be 45 days? And you guys can use that 15 days to get the application back? And at least it gives that, not vendor, but that organization 30 days to get the word out that they're, I mean, I'm just looking at it from a point, from the standpoint of the person or the organization putting on the event. If I give you an application 30 days, and let's say it may take 15 days for me to get an okay back, then all I've got is 15 days to promote my event at the plot. So could it possibly be maybe 45 days?
They can give it to us.
As early as they want?
They can give it to us.
That's just the minimum?
You know.
Okay.
That, they can give it to us way in advance, up to that.
Okay.
So that if they need to get their marketing going and their planning going. And then what we do is we pull together the event panel. And frankly, during the season, the event panel meets pretty frequently, because there's a lot of events coming in. And we just need to, we just keep turning them around, turning them around, turning them around.
Anne, did I understand your response to Paul Riddick's question about, we've only anticipated wine and beer, to mean that there will only be wine and beer?
We haven't drawn any, no, we haven't, we haven't drawn any...
I mean, I would be very, I want to talk about that.
Okay.
If it was something beyond wine and beer.
We have not said that, that it cannot be anything. So it could be anything.
Mm-hmm.
What we've gotten interest in is wine.
So I propose for the ordinance, let's do wine and beer. And then if there's interest, we can talk about that later.
The other way around.
Yeah.
Okay.
I agree.
All right.
Okay, why don't we go into closed session, then we'll come back in.
I'm going to the members of council, assembly, closed meeting on April 23, 2013, 6:40 PM.
I've seen Dr. Wibley.
The purpose sent out clause three of the Virginia Freedom of Information Act, and that is to discuss the disposition of publicly held real property in the Bolingbrook and Perk Place areas of the city.
These are dangerous.
Mr. Protigieru?
Aye.
Mr. Riddick?
Aye.
Mr. Smigal?
Aye.
Dr. Wibley?
Aye.
Ms. Williams?
Aye.
Ms. Quinn?
Aye.
Mr. Frame?
Aye.